All right, we'll call this meeting to order. First note, before we do pledge allegiance, relax for one second. Our clerk is on his way here, but not here at the present, so in the moment, I have asked Bill Davis to be our acting clerk until his arrival. For the moment, that means I need you to determine if there is a quorum pending.
There is a quorum. Two board members are absent at this moment.
All right. And with that, then we will rise for the pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all for being here this evening. We've had quite a few board meetings this summer to bring us to this point, and so tonight is probably the culmination of all those meetings. Only a couple of agenda items, but a couple of very important ones. First thing on the agenda is to approve the agenda. I'll entertain a motion to approve at this time.
So moved.
Second. We have a motion, a second to approve the agenda. Any discussion on this item? All who's in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next on the agenda is the community comment. At this time, any member of the community can step forward to address the board on any topic of their choosing. There is a three-minute limit per speaker and a 15-minute limit per topic. I see a light crowd tonight, so I'll wait just in case. All right, seeing none, we'll move along with the agenda. First on the agenda is to consider Resolution 1316 authorizing a new board-approved referendum authority. As I said a little earlier, the board has had many discussions about this item and the following item for the last several months, and tonight is the night that we'll look to take action on those items. In order to try and make sure that the community is as well-informed as possible, we have asked Colleen Murdersdorf to prepare a presentation. We're going to go ahead and do that at this time so that she can give us some updates for the board. Much of this is, almost all of this are things that we have brought to the board prior to tonight, but they're good for refreshers for us, and I think they're very important for the community to hear. And so, Colleen, with that, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Jason. All right, so the PowerPoint presentation we're going to put up shortly here, and I want to encourage you to, it's not very long, it's 12 pages or so, but it's a lot of information. So stop me at any time if you need any clarifying questions answered or clarifying information. So I really want to encourage you to, if I'm going too fast, or you don't understand something, just stop and we'll take care of answering any questions you have. So we want to talk about five things in these slides. Where we are at right now, or for fiscal 2013-14, this school year coming up, what happened during the last 2013 legislative session? There were lots of changes made, so we want to try and talk about some of those changes. And then how that legislation impacts things for the 14-15 school year. Doesn't change anything for the 13-14 school year, as far as this topic is concerned, but it does change some things going forward in 14-15. And then a little bit of discussion on the proposed voter-approved levy for 14-15, and then, again, any questions at the end of the presentation. So on the next slide, let's just talk about where we're at right now. We currently have a voter-approved operating referendum of $385. We're in our third year, 13-14 will be our third year of a five-year operating referendum that was passed five years ago, or three years ago. Our resident marginal cost pupil units, that's a long term, but that's the count that they use when they calculate referendum revenue. Right now, that number is estimated to be 5,234, and that's estimated because those counts are always done at the end of the year, but that's what we think our resident numbers are for the 13-14 school year. So our referendum revenue is basically the 385 times the 5234. So that gives us $2,015,090 in referendum revenue. In addition to that calculation, we get some alternative attendance adjustment and some equity revenue, bringing our total referendum revenue to $2,468,192. Of this amount, the taxpayers, the levy is paid by the taxpayers, they pay 80%, $1,974,000. We get a little bit of state aid, about 20%, $494,000.
Colleen, can I stop you right there and ask you for a question just to put this in context? Because those who are watching likely have not seen the school district budget many years in a row. Could you just, to put these numbers in context, give me a sense of what the overall budget is for the school district in a given year?
Sure. In the general fund, we run about $37 million, 37 to 38, somewhere in there. So this referendum revenue, although it's an important, very important piece of our funding, does not make up the majority of our revenue. But again, it's very important for the programs that we have in place.
Excellent, thank you.
Okay? Any other questions on where we're at for this year? Okay, on to the next page. What happened during the 2013 legislative session? Effective for all the referendums that start with taxes payable in 2014, so what you're going to see on your tax bill for January 1st of 2014, we will be using adjusted pupil units, which basically is the students we serve in our schools, instead of the resident students. And for us, that, there's a difference in every district for that, because you have resident kids that might attend elsewhere, and you might have non-resident kids that come into your school to be served. So that's that open enrollment that we talk about, kids can choose to attend other districts. So that number is very different. So for us, instead of using the 5325, which is our estimate for 14-15, looking two years out, we will use 4199. And again, these are estimates. And we're looking two years into the future, trying to project what those numbers will be based on past trends, which is always a little difficult, but hopefully we have the trend information correct, but of course, if things change in the community, or with the economy, or with our schools, that number changes. This decrease also reflects the decrease in pupil unit weighting factor. So that was another thing that legislative, another legislative change that was made. All of our student counts are weighted, and that weighting factor was lowered, so that means our counts are lower, too. And it gets a little more complicated than probably what you need. But just to know for now, that instead of the 5325, we're going to use 4199.
And if I can just comment real quickly, I think both parties, both the Democrat and the Republican Party wanted to simplify the formula, and even though this is complicated right now, it does, in the long run, simplify the formula. So they did that piece, and that was pretty nonpartisan.
Yes, absolutely. Okay, on to the next size, slide. So even though they changed the student count number we used, they said districts are going to be held harmless. In other words, just because we're changing the number that we're using doesn't mean that you're going to get more or less referendum revenue. So we're guaranteed to get the same total dollar amount in referendum revenue. So now this becomes just a math thing, if I can say it that simply. So because our pupil unit number changes, the referendum per pupil unit is also adjusted to guarantee the same dollar amount. So since our pupil unit number went from 5325 to 4199, our 385 now becomes 465. So those two numbers will generate the same total referendum revenue. Think of it this way, six times two is 12. If you change six to three and you still want to get 12, you're going to have to change two to four. Does that make sense? So really, it is just a math thing. You're still getting the same dollar amount in the end. Okay? Does that make sense? All right, on to the next slide.
How, Colleen, how do you explain this to the public?
Well, hopefully, this explanation will help. And, you know, this PowerPoint's going to be on our website, and if anybody has any questions, they are more than welcome to call me, but hopefully, this is, this will help clarify some of this.
Yeah, and I just reiterate, that's really why I've asked Colleen to do this this evening, because we've already seen these numbers as a board, so while this is a refresher for us, this is intended to try and help the community. All we can do is explain it as many times as we can.
Yep.
I think the next page helps explain it, too.
Hopefully. Hopefully, we're going to get to the end.
Because the state is coming to help with this change in that.
Right. Okay, so one more change they made is to add what's called location equity revenue. And what this location equity revenue does is that it recognizes that there is additional costs for large metro districts and larger outstate districts. It also recognizes that most of those districts have passed referendums to cover those costs. So what the legislature said is we realize that funding has been inadequate in past years. We're going to allow districts to pass this local equity revenue, but if you've already passed a referendum, we're going to subtract it from that referendum so that it's really just trading this dollar for this dollar. It really benefits those districts who have passed very low referendums or no referendums at all. It gives them some additional revenue. So for us, we're considered outstate. Our local equity revenue is $212, and as I indicated, it's deducted from any current referendum. So now our 385 became 465. Now our 465, we subtract the 212 from that, and we have a $253 referendum left. So we're still getting 465, but now $212 of it is considered local equity revenue and 253 is referendum. That make sense? You still with me so far? Then, the third thing is that they added the ability for a local school board to approve a local board-approved levy. The maximum that the board can approve is the difference between their current referendum and $300. So if you have no referendum, the board could approve a $300 levy. It can be renewed for subsequent one-to-five-year terms, and you can initially approve it for one-to-five years. So for us, since we now have $253 in referendum levy left because we subtracted the 212, the most our school board could approve is a $47 levy because it can't go over 300. And again, these are estimates. Final amounts will be run when final student counts are known.
And that will be the timeline on that, to clarify, I think it's almost two years from now.
Three, probably three.
Yeah, so not the end of this school year, but the following one, and then.
Right, right. So what will happen is, anytime you have these levies that are based on actual data, it takes two to three years for that adjustment to come through. So it's all based on estimates at this point. Okay, any question on that?
Could that cost us money in case we drop? You know, population, kid population, the state?
It will, it will be, the resolution that's before you tonight talks about levying up to the $300. So it's, right now, it's estimated to be a $47 board-approved levy. In three years, it could turn out to be 45, it can turn out to be 36, it could turn out to be 52. It just all depends on what the actual student numbers are when we get to that point. And of course, remember, the board always has the option, when you're approving a levy certification, to under-levy in any category, but if, when you do, with their state, with state aid attached, you also lose the state aid, too. So you've got to be careful. Any questions on that change? All right, let's talk about, then, the last thing, which is probably one of the bigger items that the legislature changed, is they changed the calculation of how state aids are paid on referendums. The state will now pay more, and local taxpayers will pay less. And we'll see the impact of that as we look at our proposed referendum going forward. And that was done for some taxpayer relief. Okay? Any questions on that? All right, so let's look at how all of that legislation then changes things for 14-15 compared to 13-14. So this is kind of a summary page. Our new referendum allowance, remember, the 385 goes to 465. Our local equity revenue is 212, that's set for all outstate districts are set at 212. So we subtract that from the 465, and our remaining referendum allowance is $253. So our potential board-approved levy is $47, we can go up to 300. And our state aid on that increases from 20% to 44%, and our local levy decreases from 80% to 56%. That extra $47 will generate about $186,000 for our district. I didn't have that on the slide, but I might add that. I thought that was important to note, too. Okay, on the next page. So if you look at an individual house for taxes that are payable in 2013, that's this year that we're currently in, a house valued at $100,000 with the current $385 referendum would have paid $89 per year for this levy, just for this levy, I'm not talking about total taxes. In 2014, a house valued at $100,000 with a $512 referendum, that includes the 212, the voter-approved referendum of 253, and the board-approved referendum of $47, will pay $63 per year, so that's a decrease of $26. Or a little bit of additional money. Now, obviously, if you don't pay the, or if you don't pass the 47, it would be a larger decrease. Okay, any questions on that impact for 14-15? All right, let's move on to talk about what we're proposing for the voter-approved levy. The school board is proposing a new referendum levy of $636. This would increase our revenue by $2,543,000. We're asking for a 10-year levy with inflation adjustments, and we'll talk about that inflation adjustments in the next slide. We're also asking to revoke the current levy of 465 and replace it. Because that levy is up in two years, we don't want to be doing this again two years from now, so there's something called revoke and replace. You can take away the old one, add it to the new levy, and replace it. Does that make sense? Okay, so our ballot amount will then be 1101, that's the current referendum of 465 plus the new one of 636. So the estimated net change in taxes for a home valued at $100,000 is $91 per year, more than what they would be paying currently. Okay? And that takes into account, we talked on that previous page, of that $26 decrease. So that takes into account that decrease, too. So if the board passes the $47 levy and the community passes the 1101 levy, then that effect of all of that is an increase of $91 per year on a home valued at $100,000.
And if they didn't pass it.
Pardon me?
If they didn't pass it, is it, what, $89 a year?
If they didn't pass it, it would be, right, you would actually see your taxes go down $26.
Oh, yes. If they didn't pass it, it'll still go down $26.
Right, right. Okay, any more questions on that? Let's talk about one more thing, then. The proposed voter-approved levy, we are asking for an inflation adjustment, and that ratio.
One clarification, please, just to separate it, maybe might make it easier. If you just look at the voter-proposed levy, just the voter, that's $117 increase, all right? And then if you look at the legislative changes, that nets out a negative $26. So if you take the 117 minus the 26, then you get the 91. So the 91 is the net, I call it the net-net of both of them.
And it's total change, it's not what the new taxes will be, it's what the change will be, so that will be on top of whatever the current taxes.
Yeah, I think it has to be clear that this is $117 per year increase just for the levy. It's just that you get a net of a $26 decrease from the legislative changes, so the actual net's 91.
Yeah, I can clarify that a little bit in the presentation, too. We're going to post this on the website, so maybe I'll clarify that, too. Okay? On the next slide, then, I just want to talk a little bit about the inflation.
Okay, we're going to explain, oh, go ahead. Explanation.
All right. So the inflation adjustment ratio is based on the Consumer Price Index for all urban consumers as published by the Bureau of Labor Statistics. So the Department of Education collects that data, and every year, then, they run the calculation for the inflation adjustment for those districts who have inflation adjustments on their levies, and many districts do. So for 2014, the inflation adjustment is estimated to be 1.22%. So a district who has a $1,000 levy is going to get another $1.22.
Where'd you get that figure?
This is on the Minnesota Department of Education website. They've got all the calculations out there for, I think, through 2021 or something like that, but of course, as further you go out, they're putting in an inflation factor of one. But you can go out and see what the past inflation factors have been, and what they estimate it to be for 14 and 15, and then going forward.
Is there a deflation factor in case a goal is below?
There is.
Zero?
Yes.
In case we're in a deflationary.
Yes.
So then it'll decrease, so in other words, okay.
Yes.
Is there a limit on the inflation?
Not in statute, no. So it's all tied to this Consumer Price Index. And there's, it's a formula, so without getting too specific here, I, you know, I didn't put any of that in here, so there is a formula that tends to limit it, but.
Was it in the early 80s, we had a recession, Howard and Tom, what was the interest rate or the inflation rate back then? Does anybody know Howard and Tom, if they're old enough? Sorry, but.
It's quite right.
Well, you'd have to go back and look at the Consumer Price Index for all urban consumers. I don't, you know, you've got to be careful on using.
There's lots of inflation rates, and you want to be careful about which one you're recording. This is a fairly conservative and low number, so you don't want to compare it to.
Right, I think when oil prices skyrocketed, and maybe you're thinking, oh, 70s, there was a huge jump in inflation, and that's the point, but I think it kind of.
I was buying a home in 1970, and one of the mortgage rates that I looked at was in the neighborhood of 13%. I happened to qualify for a low-interest state-supported loan at the time, so I got it in for about 7%, but it was an interesting economic time back, late 70s or 80s.
So there's no limit on this?
I'm not going to say that there isn't a, there probably isn't a limit, but I think you have to be careful in looking at the statute, because as I read through it, it was very complicated in the calculation factors. So I'm not so sure that they just, they don't just take this percent and apply it, there are some other things that go into the formula. So no, there's no limit, but I think that the formula itself is not something that just allows it to run rampant.
I mean, we would be paying the cost for food, fuel, and that's, that's what it's addressing, is those changes.
Look, if inflation was 10%, then our inflation would be 10%, and the cost of the district would be going up that high.
Yeah.
Am I correct that this Bureau of Labor Statistics is a federal estimate, not a state?
So you could Google the Bureau of Labor Statistics, or Google even just the Consumer Price Index for all urban consumers, and you could see all that history. But what I'm, I want to caution you against is don't just take that number and assume that that's the number that the department uses for these inflationary adjustments, because there's a formula that goes through. Does that make sense?
But there are a number of governmental programs that would make their, any adjustments based on these same statistics, and I.
Possibly, I don't know that for a fact, so I don't, I don't want to speak for the government.
I guess the point I'm trying to make is that it is a publicly-generated, easily-available statistic that is generally accepted as, quite as accurate as any predictive-type statistic can be about what's going to happen.
I would say so, yes. And then on the Department of Education's website, the estimate for 2015 is 1.67%. Okay? That's all I.
Well, the downside of that is if we had that kind of inflation, our dollars wouldn't go nearly as far. So if we didn't have this on, we wouldn't be able to buy what we intended to buy with the revenue from it.
Right. Many districts have gone this route, because it does give you just that, it's, you know, a little bit of an extra to help with those inflationary costs that you're paying anyway with all of the bills that we need to pay.
Over 10 years, that could be quite a little bit less money than what we set out to do.
Yep. You know, it's $12.20, I believe.
Even when inflation hovers around 2%, it's, it's a very real thing over 10 years, and I think much of the financial struggles we deal with now, when you look at state funding, is that that has not kept up with inflation. And one, 2% might not sound very much, but when that happens for 10 years, that becomes a serious falling behind of your ability to keep up with what you once were doing. And that's what school districts all across the state have been struggling with, why you see more levies coming to, before communities, is because the state, up until very recently, has not been at all keeping up with inflation, making it harder and harder to keep up, and so I think this is just a piece, try and make sure that there's this levy at some level keeps up with what real inflation is. I think it's important to note that, you know, the board doesn't set that, it's not a way for the board to increase it as much as it wants in the future. This will be determined by the state formula that's in place, and it's been there for a long time, and we have some estimates of what those numbers are.
And dollar, real dollars, is between 30,000 and 40,000 a year, is what it amounts to for the inflation, out of $2.5 million levy.
Out of, yeah, when you look at the total levy, I mean, we have a $9 million levy, so, you know, 20,000 to 30,000, you know, it's, it is an increase, but it's a very small increase.
Might save a teacher.
Exactly. Any questions on the information?
I have a question, just to make sure that it's on a homestead value, not all the property owned, like a farm.
Referendums are based on market value for commercial farms, homestead, but farms are limited to the house, the garage, and one acre. So it's not like a bond issue. A bond issue is on all farmland, but with a referendum, it's the house, the garage, and one acre.
So we want to make sure that we, that that's not really stated in here, and I, people always ask about that.
Might be another good clarification to add, I think that is a good.
And also, this is a constant, it's not, it doesn't, it doesn't vary with the other businesses, it's the same $100,000. It's, it's just per $100,000 of value for that one acre and farm, and then also the businesses and also the homes.
Right. I want to be sure I caught everything, was, what else did we talk about changing on this slide? Oh, clarifying the 117, I think it was.
Yeah, 117.
Okay, any other questions? I know that's a lot to absorb, we've talked about it several times, so hopefully it's making sense to people, and like I said, if there are any questions from the board members or the public at large, they are more than welcome to give me a call. My name and number is on the last page of the slide, and we will put this on our website. Okay?
If, with the board's indulgence, I think, actually, no, I've got back, that's not for this item, so I'm not going to go through it now. I think as we get to the levy item, I also want to read through, again, for the public, we've done it at a prior meeting, but I want to do it again before we act on that tonight, to read through what the school board has voted on as the plan for those levy funds, should the levy pass. And so I'm going to go through those in a little bit, so anybody watching in the public can, can get a sense of what those things are, and what that, what that money, Colleen has just talked about, will be going towards. However, before we get to that, we have two, let me look at my agenda here, we have two resolutions in front of us. Currently, we are on Resolution 1316 authorizing a new board-approved referendum authority, Action R. So this is the levy, the board-approved levy that we can increase up to $300. I think we maybe want you up here to ask these questions, just in case I knew these numbers. Currently, that number would be about 250, I figured, what, exactly, 255?
253.55.
253.55.
I believe.
253.55 cents.
Yep, in the resolution, what's allowed, what's calculated right now is $46.45.
So, so the board, with this resolution, would approve increasing that amount to $300 at 47, which would, at this moment, would be $47. Colleen has given me the information, I think she said it a little bit earlier, but I'll clarify for everybody, because the final numbers will be getting calculated into the future, the referendum is written in such a way that when those numbers are finalized, the actual value remains at $300. That could go wrong for us in two ways, you could imagine. So if we passed only $47 tonight, we said $47, and that's all the referendum said, then in a few years, when that gets clarified, that could end up being, you know, in fact, we only have $30 of additional revenue that we could do instead of, instead of 47, and we've just approved a levy up beyond what we were meant to do. So we can't do that, and it could also go the other way, if that number. If that number decreased, the two fifty-three decreased, meaning that the forty-seven dollars meant we actually had fifty or sixty dollars worth of levy authority, then we would want to increase it up so that we're at the three hundred dollar level. So, so that's, there's some wording in the levy to make sure that when the numbers finally come in, it stays at three hundred dollars and it doesn't get adjusted in any, any strange way. Make sure that we don't go over that amount or significantly under that amount.
And I just wanna clarify that that, once that calculation is final, it won't change. So once we get to the actual numbers, that is what it will be. That is the only authority you will have going forward and be able to renew every five years, unless legislation changes that.
Right, okay. Hopefully, my clarification actually clarified something and didn't confuse it. But that is, because those numbers are in flux, and there's nothing we can do about that, that's, that's gonna happen according to state statute. We tried to make sure that the referendum was worded to react to, to any changes that could happen if that gets fine-tuned in the next few years. Any other questions about this, this referendum then? Hearing none, then I will entertain a motion to approve this resolution.
Sure move.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion, a second, to approve Resolution thirteen sixteen, authorizing a new board-approved referendum authority. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I will be voting against this for many reasons. Reason number one is that I think it's very dangerous for any school district not to go to the voters for a levy. This is, whatever the amount is, whatever it is, it's board-approved. I think it's, like I said, quite dangerous that, you know, go to the voters. I think they should have a voice in this, and I'll be voting against it. Another thing is that they say that taxes will go down, whatever, but, you know, basically, we are paying for it someplace, like with the two-point-one billion dollar tax increase, right? I mean, this is, somebody's paying for this.
Absolutely, you're paying for it, your cigarette taxes.
You know, you tax the upper two percent, which are the job creators.
Yep.
Smokers, which I don't smoke, but they, you know, eight dollars a pack.
Yep.
The warehouse tax, there's a discussion on the sales tax for agricultural machinery, which hurts farmers.
I don't know anything about that tax.
Yeah, they just brought that up, and they might revoke it if they have a special session. So people are paying for this.
They're already paying that tax, you're right. That tax is in place, and that's not gonna go away regardless of what you do here.
Yeah, but it's, so, it's, property taxes might go down, but, you know, if you happen to be in the upper two percent and you smoke and you warehouse your, your widgets, and you happen to have a combine, too, you're gonna be paying tax.
You're gonna pay that regardless of what you do with this resolution.
Just a follow-up question, are there any other board-approved taxes that we implement? Do we do a health and safety, is that board-approved?
Yes. Our, our nine million dollars is board-approved levy. Obviously, you could choose not to do any of that, but that would put us in a very dire situation, so...
Is our lease levy approved by the board?
Yes.
I would follow, yeah, I think that's an important...
All of our levies are...
There are many levies that the board approves, that don't go to the voters for approval. I, I'd also say that I, I don't think a board-approved, a school board-approved levy would be any more dangerous than a city council-approved levy, which happens all the time, a county-approved levy, which happens all the time. This board is elected by the community, and they can unelect us if they're not happy with decisions we make, so...
Basically, we forfeit it if we don't pass it.
Absolutely.
That would hurt our students.
Yes, the increase that, in taxes that Richard talks about, or put in place to fund these, just these things. So if you don't take advantage of it, then you're losing out on revenue that people are gonna pay anyway.
Safe to say, the majority of school districts in Minnesota will take advantage of this.
Absolutely. And not everybody can, because you have to have under three hundred dollars in levy. So if you have over three hundred, you're not a district that can take advantage of it.
So if you understand it, it makes sense to vote for it.
Absolutely, in my opinion.
So it'd be dangerous, in a sense, not to vote for it, because we are not receiving our contributions from the state, that our taxpayers in our area are paying.
We're paying the taxes, and we're not, we're not going to get them then.
Right, so that means...
Our share, yes, so I think we need to...
No, I would say the, the taxes that have been cited are not school board-approved taxes, warehousing and the upper two percent and all those sorts of things. That was decided by the legislature, who established the rules under which school boards have to operate. And under those rules, if we approve this levy, we generate some income for our students, which, in my opinion, we need. And we do not increase our, we're just operating under the rules that the state has set. If someone disagrees with the rules the state has set, then the state has to change them. We're just following the, the guidelines and the, and the procedures that have been established for all Minnesota school districts.
The intent of legislation, you're following the intent of legislation, yes.
And we're also following one of our visions of being fiscally responsible for our students. I voted for this.
And more importantly, we're providing some opportunities. We've already decided on what some of those opportunities are for our students, and technology initiatives and others. Now, I'm excited for our students to be able to have those things. So that, more, more than anything, that's what informs my vote this evening. Any further discussion? All right, hearing none, Mr. Clark, would you please do a roll call?
I will vote yes. Tom Casper?
Aye.
Deb Davis?
Aye.
Yvette Martholler?
Aye.
Richard Olson?
No.
Jason Ingram?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, it is five to one.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Clark. Next item on our agenda then this evening is the much larger resolution to be brought to the community. We have heard Colleen telling us about the finances behind that, and how that will show up on, on the ballot. The revoke and replace aspect of that, that's in the current referendum as it's worded. So we're considering Resolution thirteen seventeen relating to revoking the existing referendum revenue authorization of the school district, approving a new authorization, and calling an election thereon. So the item of information that I don't think we've stated yet tonight, so I wanna make sure that we do before we vote on this for anybody watching, are what that, what that will entail for the community, for us to put these things into the district. So it, it includes twelve teachers at the elementary level, six classroom teachers, six specialists, meaning music and art, and physical education. It will include a significant amount of money towards technology initiatives, close to, I think I added it up earlier today, close to one million dollars, something between eight hundred thousand and a million dollars towards technology equipment and support for our staff. It includes two media specialists, something one of our board members holds close to his heart, but is also very important for our students. Media specialists who keep our libraries state-of-the-art in the district, and also serve as a go-between between those teachers in the district using technology and, and those who are implementing, implementing the technology in the district. It includes a service learning coordinator, someone who can help bring our kids out of the classroom and into the community to augment their learning. It includes an English language coordinator to streamline all the services we provide to those students in our community for whom English is not their first language. It increases the number of guidance counselors by two at the high school or, and middle school. To clarify, that's one at the high school, one at the middle school, new guidance counselors at the high school and middle school. It adds four new teachers to the middle school and high school, which will allow us to lower some class sizes and, and offer opportunities that we've not been able to do in the past. Specifically, we've talked about things such as AP classes or other college, college credit opportunities and the like in our schools. Going down this list, but not... It includes secondary career initiatives, which includes things that often have been referred to as Vo-Tech, but these days includes much of what's called STEAM, science, technology, engineering, arts, and mathematics, as well as, you know, potentially things like robotics programs. It includes the expansion of a summer program called the Summer STEAM Program for K through eight students, which we have just started to offer to students. That is now open to only a limited number of students because of its source of funding is grant-related. And with this levy, we could give that summer opportunity to all kids throughout, you know, throughout Fairville, and we're, we're very excited about that potential. So that is, I wanted to go through that, that is, these are things that this board has been talking about for at least a couple of months now, a list that we have looked at a number of times and have approved. And, and the amount for this levy is determined by the, the cost of implementing those items that I have just discussed. So I wanted to make sure we talked about that, 'cause I thought that's sort of the basics of why we're talking about a levy. And then beyond that, I'll open the floor to any discussion from, from other board members.
This will raise taxes, that's correct, that, I think on the ballot will raise taxes, I think that says it on the ballot.
Yes.
And I was just wondering, just how, can this community take any more tax increases? I was just wondering, I'm not asking you, but not that...
Well, why don't you say how you feel about that, rather than asking the question?
I know that, it was in a work session in December, a former board member, James Wolfe, made a statement. We were talking about programming, he says, Fairville is a poor community. You know, again, we're, if this passes, they're going to be raising taxes on businesses, single-family dwellings, duplexes, rental property, of course, they have to pass that on to the tenants. And just wondering how much we can afford in this community. And I think that we're at the limit, I think we're too high as it is with the city, county, school, district, and along with all the rest of the taxes happening that they put on to us, especially the upper two percent, which are the job creators in this town.
Any other comments?
Well, I think our community development people would be happy to see us pass this levy because it helps bring new businesses to town when you have good schools. And without good schools, it, just the opposite happens. And when you start getting class sizes up to thirty-four, which we're gonna have if we don't pass this, I think it's easy for employees to go live in another town.
I guess I would just comment that over the last eight months I've been on the board, I've attained, attended a couple forums with people from a lot of different communities in Fairville. And a lot of those people would be considered poor or low-income, and their primary concern was education. And I think they were ready to make a commitment to a levy, just so they could have good public education for their children, because that's the only way they get out of poverty, is by making that transition. And so I, you know, I think, my son doesn't have a lot of money, he owns a house, and he'll have to pay taxes, but I think he believes in public education, and, and will, will make that contribution.
It has been the pattern over the last decade or so. Slightly turning around here with the last legislative session, but the investment in education has not kept up with inflation, nor with the changes in technology, and so on. And the levy that we are proposing here, as I understand it, and I've asked this question several times, would put us in the range of the state average, meaning that we're not asking our citizens to invest on a higher level than all the other citizens of all the other communities in our state. It's unfortunate, but it is real, that school districts have to depend on local property tax revenue. I have profound disagreements with the property tax, because it is regressive. It is not based on the payer's ability to pay. And that's why I was glad to see some improvement on state funding, because that is a more progressive way of funding. People who can afford more, pay more, and to me, that's a reasonable approach. But the fact remains that districts across the state have had to ask their local citizens to contribute by way of levies, such as the one we're proposing, to support basic educational programs. Basic to the twenty-first century, basic to the quality of education. This district has suffered a series of cuts over the last ten years that I think have limited, and in some cases severely limited, our ability to address some of the most important issues in a changing environment, changing in terms of our demographic, changing in terms of our technology needs, changing in terms of what it means to be a citizen in the twenty-first century. So under all those things, the, the reality is that we have to ask, as other districts across the state have asked their citizens, for that kind of support. What our citizens can afford is a decision that they can make, and they, they will make. That's democracy in action. But school districts are unique, I believe, under governmental bodies, in having to ask for voter approval. Other levels of government, if they decide that they, they've gotta have an update the fire truck, they levy to update the fire truck. I think we are not asking for anything other than to restore some of the cuts that this district has absorbed over the last ten years, and trying to place technology on a sustainable footing. I have no argument with the increasing role of technology. I think we need to be careful and prudent about how we approach that. And I do not wanna see technology as a substitute for some of the more classical pieces of education. I know well-read is still considered to be a compliment, I'm not sure that well-surfed is. But there is a lot of potential in the technology, and, and I think we need to put our teachers and our students and our community on a basis to compete with the rest of our state. And without a levy such as we are proposing, I don't believe that to be possible. And I'm sad that it does require an investment, but that is simply the reality. There is no free lunch, as they said back in the sixties, and maybe before. And so we have to pay the cost of what we want to provide for our young people. And as a lifelong educator, I think it's worth every penny.
Thank you, Mr. Casper.
I'd just like to say that I fear if we, if we don't do this, that our, our students who are suffering in poverty in English language are gonna suffer more, because some of our better students, brighter students, I don't know really what to call them, their parents are gonna pull them out and take them to other districts. Then we're losing even more money, because as our pupil unit goes down, then our revenue, revenue goes down, and we'll have less money to service those kids in need. So it, they, they, you know, I think the community understands that to get ahead and to make the best decisions for their students are to support us in the decisions that we're making.
Can I just make one little comment, too? Financially, I just want to let people know that out of the two-point-five million dollars, remember, the state's going to supplement five-hundred-fifty thousand dollars of that. If you roll that out over ten years, that's five-point-five million dollars that would go to this school district. If we do not approve this levy, we will lose that money, and that will go elsewhere.
And that's, that's part of that equalization.
That's part of the equalization.
So the state... So the state matches, the state does some matching to help the property poor school districts, but they have to pass a levy to take advantage of it.
That's correct.
And that number could get larger as our pupil unit goes down, correct?
It depends on how, yeah, that's correct. And it depends, of course, on the future of the state, too, and how things work out. Yep.
Well, I guess, I just want to add, and I said this last time, but I think it's important to say how excited I am with the opportunities this levy can give to our kids because that's really why I'm going to vote to support it and why I'll be taking my time to try and make sure as many people in the community understand it as possible in the upcoming couple of months. I think that list I read before, I might have read it rather monotone, but to me, it's an exciting opportunity for our kids. A little bit earlier, Howard said we're going to have class sizes in the mid-30s. And I think we should restate that. We aren't going to have what we do have this year. And I state that as the father of a daughter who's going to be in one of those classes. That's going to hit fourth and fifth graders, and my daughter's a fourth grader. So I'm speaking as a parent with my kids in schools right now, who has a daughter who's going to be in a classroom, in the fourth grade classroom with probably over thirty students. And that's just too much. No teacher should have to try and address the important needs of every individual student with a classroom that large. So I'm excited that not only does this levy address that situation, but many others. It carries our district into the future. I think it creates a vision for our district of where we're going. And that's exciting to me, and that's why I'm supporting it. It's important always to balance things that are exciting with the cost. I think it's important, and I think this board does balance the cost of this and the taxes that will go up because of it. But I think we have moderated that. It would be easy to ask for a much larger levy. Many districts have a much larger levy than the one we're asking for. It would be very easy to just go overboard and ask for a larger one. But I think this board has tried to keep it in balance and keep it moderate. And should this levy pass, it'll put us in line with many districts around us. We will not have anywhere near the highest levy around us. Many districts around us will still have much higher levies. And yet, it still creates exciting things for us, and so that's it. When you break it down for a $100,000 home, this is 25 cents a day. It's a quarter a day. And while I understand that times can be tough for many people, I think if you ask the vast majority of people in Faribault whether or not their household can chip in another quarter a day to make sure that our kids have the resources that other communities have, the answer is a resounding yes. And that's why I want to make sure we bring this opportunity to the community and do everything we can to make sure they understand. Those are my two cents. Any other comments?
I have a couple points to make. One is about nine months ago, we asked the voters for a levy increase, and it was voted down. Now we go, a year later, we're asking again. Number two, that one of the greatest fears I have, and I experienced that back in the original 385 levy and back in 2005, is that when you vote for programs like this, it, over a period of time, which we've seen it, it goes away because of salary increases. There are some fine things here. But, you know, to start something, and it's been stated in this school board before, we start some great projects, I like to steam, but then it goes away after a few years because we don't have the money. And do we go back to the voters again for a levy to support programs, or what? Like I said, I'll be voting no on this. And I guess that's it. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Salary increases are not always a bad thing. If I recall correctly, we were the lowest paid, had the lowest salaries of any school in the Big Nine. And I think it's part of our responsibility as board members to make sure that we can retain the good teachers that we have and attract the best young teachers coming out. And along with it, provide them the tools they need so that the morale is conducive to good education. You know, I've looked at every proposal that we're offering here, and every one of them makes sense. There's none of them that are nice to have, but not essential. They're all essential. We could have added a lot more to this. Reducing class size is among one of the most direct benefits. But we have, for example, adding new counselors on, some extra counselors. And I can recall, one of the things one of the principals said was, this is something we really need because with this limited number of counselors we have now and the high student-to-counselor ratio, they just don't have time to work with the families. And you look at some of the social problems we have now and some of the situations that children come from, there's times in their life when they need some help. And we need those counselors. So that's just one item that's on here that's very important. The Summer STEAM Program, look at what that did this last year and the opportunities that it offers. You know, the coordinators that we were hiring, those are not just nice-to-have positions either. For example, our English Language Order Coordinator, very important for us to have that so that we can get these kids reading by third grade. And that's why we added it. Because all the research shows that when you have that kind of support, you can help identify those kids that are having problems. And, you know, to me, a big thing is, I look at those parents out there with young kids and grandparents as well. And do we do them a justice by not offering this community a chance to pass a levy? And one thing we haven't talked about is what would happen if we don't pass it? We're back to doing the same things we have been. And I think people have seen in the last several months since last November, there were cuts made, and, yeah, the state helped us out, but that was only to about half of what we needed. And we need to update our technology, there's no question about it. We need to have ways to help our teachers integrate that technology, and they need training for that. You can't just expect them to throw it at them and not have any training. So all of these things that we have on this list, I think, make sense. They're not fluff. There's more we could have added. But I think this is a very logical path for us to take is to offer this community an opportunity to bring the best kind of education we can possibly afford to this community. Yes, I'm sure there's some that'll think we can't afford it and will vote against it. But I voted for a lot of levies through the years that I've lived in Faribault, and it always is a challenge because, you know, you can say, well, it'll raise my taxes. Do I really want that? But in the end, look at our schools that we have now. I remember when we passed that bond issue to build Roosevelt and to build a high school. If we hadn't done that then, those buildings would have cost us a fortune today. And look at what nice facilities we have. And now we need to support it with enough teachers and the right technology, counselors and coordinators, all the things that are on this list.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a comment. And following up on something you said earlier, what happened in the past, yes, happened, but the community has voiced their opinion and changed the board. If they truly don't think that this is right next rounds, they're going to change the board members again. So talking about money being put aside for one thing and used for something else, this board isn't there. They weren't the same board. We're different. We're using our money more fiscally responsible and in the good nature of our children. We're not nilly-willy throwing money away to things that we haven't set our mind to. So we need to move forward and remember that if the community doesn't want us here, they won't vote for us again. You know, they'll change the board and get the people in that will do what they want them to do. So we need to trust our community.
I think I just want to address a couple of quick things. I have for now, well over five years, heard from a number of members of the community, usually the same members, that the problem is teacher settlements, teacher salaries. And I think Howard made the point, which is, to me, the last point we should ever have to make about this, which is currently, I've been told, and I think this is true, and I believe it's true, that Faribault teachers are currently the lowest-paid teachers in the Big Nine. And so to anybody who says that teachers are the reason why that we struggle with finances, I just ask, how much less should we be paying our teachers? How much less should our teachers have to make than all the other teachers in our area before it's okay for us to support our schools? I think we should stop using our teachers as the scapegoat. They ask for a fair salary, for fair work, and that's what we try to give them. And I think we should stop using them as the scapegoat for why we won't support our schools when we do that. And the second thing I would add is, I think, you know, the question was, will these things always be there? Will we put these things in, and then will they go away? There's no question that this isn't the intent of this board for what these things will do. We can make no guarantees about future boards and what future years' worth of funding will be. What I can tell you is this is the intent of the board. In my five years, I think you'd be hard-pressed to find times, this board, my five years on the board, you'd be hard-pressed to find times where the board hasn't followed through on things they said they were going to do. I think Ms. Davis is absolutely right. There are times we tend to hold ourselves accountable for things in the past. And I think, I know, Mr. Olson, you've said many times, we should move forward now. I think it's important to move forward with this and not to hold this district accountable for decisions made by past boards that are no longer with us. What I can tell you is that these things that we're putting in place will not happen if the levy doesn't pass. Fourth graders will still have class sizes of 35 if the levy doesn't pass. That's going to happen. This year, it's going to happen the following year. So will this be exactly what happens for the next ten years? Can't guarantee that. Shouldn't guarantee that. It's what we plan to put in place now and what we hope to build on in the future. But I can tell you this, we won't move forward with this if the levy doesn't pass. That I know for sure.
Other comments from the board? All right, hearing none? I'm sorry. I'll allow him for more comments if you want.
I'm just thinking about your last sentence, and it is absolutely true. You know, it's virtually impossible to move forward if we don't pass this levy. And if we don't put it out to the public, we don't even offer them a chance.
Thinking about what has been said, I'd also like to say one more thing. We've had a number of discussions in my three years on the board about what does it mean to be well-educated? Because that is the function of a school board, to try and guarantee a quality education for the young people of our community. And the items that Mr. Enbrock has described here, I think, repair some of the damage that has been suffered due to funding shortfalls in the past. I'm not trying to focus on that, but it was real damage, and it does need repair. It stabilizes things in the present and gives us a little bit of invention room for the future. So it does three things that I think are essential to ensure high-quality education in this district. If we don't have the funds to do those things that we're talking about here, then we're going to have to try and invent another system. And I don't believe any system we can invent will accomplish these same goals. And perhaps any system we have to deal with will result in either further damage to the quality of learning in this district. There are hard-working employees out there every day. They are doing, it's been my privilege to work closely with them over the last forty years. And I want this board, my part of, I'm, my part of, on this board is to try and tell them that we believe in what you're doing. We know that you're facing difficult challenges, and we want to do what we can to provide the infrastructure, the support services, the, all the things that are needed in order to make sure that our Faribault students are well-educated. I challenge anyone and everyone. If you think we can have a high-quality program at a lower cost, please tell me how.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve Resolution 1317 relating to revoking the existing referendum revenue authorization of the school district, approving a new authorization, and calling an election thereon.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further comments? Hearing none. Mr. Clerk, would you please do a vote call?
I will vote yes. Todd Casper?
Yes.
Deb Davis?
Yes.
Yvette Martholler?
Yes.
Richard Olson?
No.
And Jason Engriff?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, the vote is five to one.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. That is the last item for this evening. And I thank you all for the hard work you've done with this important topic. A couple of quick comments towards the end of trying to make sure the community is as informed as possible. Todd and I have already discussed an open forum on August 21st.
Yep.
That we're going to, I think I have that date right. I was about to look that up. Is that, one week from, let me just look.
That's a week from Wednesday.
I put it on my calendar. We've talked about August 21st, a week from Wednesday, at the high school auditorium. We've made special outreaches to the PTOs and some other groups, but we intended to be an open meeting for people to be able to come and ask questions on, to inform as many people as possible about what this levy. I don't expect it to be the last open meeting. I expect us to do another one. And I'd also say, for the community, anybody watching, as we did last year at about this time, I know Todd, myself, and I'm sure the board members would be willing to participate, are willing to come and speak to any group of people. Last year, we probably spoke with twenty groups of various sizes.
Almost fifty.
A lot of various groups trying to be out there and communicating with the community as much as possible about the details of this levy and what it will mean for our district and for the community. And we are very willing to do so. If you have any desire to have us come and speak with a group of people you know, it can be formal or informal, go ahead and contact the district to be in office, and we'll get you in touch with Todd, and we'll come and visit you just as soon as we can make it happen. Any other?
Time on the 21st.
Seven o'clock at the high school auditorium.
And we'll be starting to put some information on our website, too. So if you want to read a lot of information for this, we'll.
Website, now that the resolution is completed, the website will start to have much of the information that we've talked about tonight, the presentation you saw tonight, the list of things that will be added. All those things will be made available on the website. All right, any other?
I would just like to invite any citizens that are concerned. You've phoned me at home. And, you know, if you don't want to participate in a group session, I'll be hap, I, for one, will be happy to speak with you. And I think the other board members probably can't speak for them, but my guess is that they would be willing to do the same. It's our job.
All right. Thank you all very much. With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Hold those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. I'll just carry this for adjournment. Thank you all very much.